National Anthem is on by our Kennedy kids. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was excellent. Thanks for that. This is the portion of our meeting that is reserved for public comments. If anyone wants to address the board publicly, now is the time to do it. Just raise your hand. Okay. Nobody? Okay, then we'll move on to our next. Oops, I'm sorry. Yes, just state your name and if you could stand, please.
Should I be right here?
Why don't you come right up to the microphone?
Okay, great. My name is Tammy. My name is Tammy Flahive and I'm a parent of two kids at Grafton Public Schools. And tonight I want to tell you why I think the Grafton School District should pass a resolution opposing legislation allowing guns to be possessed in or on school district property by anyone other than law enforcement. And it's important that local school boards go on the record now as opposing any state proposal to mandate guns be allowed on school grounds so that swift action can be taken once a bill has been introduced. In the past, similar bills were put on a fast track, so school districts need to be prepared for this. This policy endangers our children's safety in cases of accidental discharge of weapons or weapons left unattended. This measure is wrong for our community and thus violates local control. Wisconsin has a very low level of safety training required for concealed carry permits. I'm concerned about the possibility of allowing guns into school classrooms, sporting events, school concerts, and other functions where members of the public are invited. Wisconsin concealed carry law requires very little training. Permits are given to folks who have never handled a gun or practiced safe firearm handling. The state's proposed law treats all concealed carry permit holders the same and would require schools to allow even those with little or no training to carry loaded weapons around children. I'm concerned about the risk of deadly accidents, which are much more likely than a good guy with a gun coming to the rescue in an emergency. Most school districts have worked closely with local law enforcement agencies to draw up emergency plans and get all school personnel and first responders on the same page. Good guy gun owners who have not been involved in this planning increase the danger to our staff and students. School districts have invested considerable time and resources in creating emergency plans and local school boards should be the ones making decisions about the schooling environment and safety policy. So I hope you will pass a resolution opposing any measure by the Wisconsin Legislature to make all school districts allow concealed carry on school grounds.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, the consent agenda. There are two items, the payment of the bills and the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? Any questions, additions, corrections?
I think the under D1, the third bullet there...
On the minutes?
On the minutes, yes. They talk about fire sprinklers, the cost of fire sprinklers in each building has been included as a potential addition on the preliminary budget. I think that we need to add some language because the cost has been included only for the new addition and that Hoffman was asked to gather the costs to sprinkle all of the facilities. And in fact, we went through that during our discussion of budgetary adjustments. So I would say, rather than the way it's worded there, the cost to fully sprinkle all district facilities was estimated by Hoffman and has been included for consideration as a potential addition to the preliminary budget. By code, such fire sprinkling is not required. All new spaces will be sprinkled consistent with applicable code.
That's more accurate. Whose motion is it? Clint, is it yours?
Yeah, revise accordingly to include that change.
Any questions or discussion about the amended motion? Paul, you seconded it?
I did second and I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, thanks, Paul. So we are at our... I'll let you take over, Mr. Nelson. You can introduce our Kennedy Elementary Kids.
Yes, so this year we've come back to having each of our schools come and present on things that are happening in their various schools. And tonight it is Kennedy's opportunity to do that. Dr. Gunderson is here somewhere. There you are. There's a lot of people to look around for and find you. So I see a number of staff members as well as obviously our students and Dr. Gunderson. So I will turn it over to Craig and have him sort of explain what the next steps are. I see some artwork in front of us. I'm assuming that's part of it.
Well, thank you for welcoming Kennedy Elementary School to the Board of Education meeting this evening. We have a lot of great highlights for you today to talk about and I am overwhelmed with the amount of support from our Kennedy students and staff who came out tonight. So thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to give a great shout out to our Star Spangled Banner Club. What a great group of kids directed by Mrs. Dillahun. Let's give them one more round of applause, please. They were fantastic and I want to let you know that this was their first gig. They had never performed in front of an audience before and what a great showing for that. The National Anthem Club is practicing every Friday during their lunch recess. They get together on their own time. Mrs. Dillahun volunteers for lunchtime and they are in the works for arranging an Admirals game and a Chinooks game as well. And Mrs. Dillahun wanted everyone to know that if you wanted to book her and her group, you can just contact her at Kennedy and she'd be happy to set something up at an appropriate event. Okay? So thank you very much, National Anthem Club, for coming. It's a great group. They obviously sing, but there's also a historical component as well, where they're learning about the flag, the battle, the song itself, and it's a history lesson and a great, great chance to show patriotism to our country. As you may have noticed, there's some artwork in front of you today. We have some Kennedy Elementary featured artists. Our art teachers are Mrs. Lecter, Mrs. Schrader, and Mrs. Geiger, and they've set aside approximately two pieces per grade level. And I'm looking out in the audience and I see many of our artists here this evening. And so when I read your name, if you're here, students, please come over by me and we'll introduce you to the school board. So 5K, McGuire Moon and Colson Mauer, please come up. First grade, James Kapke and Grace Domrez, are you here? Second grade, Ashaya Harper-Clark and Paige Praefrock. Third grade, Becca Bosmans and also Grace Slominski. Fourth grade, Jaden Gartman and Cece Williamson. And fifth grade, Poppy Durzon and also Jacob Olson. At this time, I'd like the board members to take a very brief moment to review the artwork in front of them. And if you have questions for our artists, this is a great opportunity to provide feedback or ask a question.
Is there a question? Is it okay? Who did it? Jacob did this, right? Jacob, who's... That's called pointillism, right? When you make all these dots like that, is that what they call that kind of art? Oh, okay. Does it drive you nuts making all those little dots? No? Okay. You did a good job.
Poppy, this is very unique and very clever. What, very meaning behind it? It's really cool. I really like that.
Is that your hand? Is that your hand?
That's Becca here. This is really... I love the colors. Can you tell me a little bit about this? This weaving? And what are these? How long does this take? It take a long time? Yeah. It's a really... You did a really nice job.
Is Ashaya in here? Is that yours? Can you give us a little background on how you came up with this idea?
Well, I just do tells to make it like a magic fox.
Okay, so this is a fox. How did you know to come out with a 3D to make it more lifelike? Is that your idea? Pretty impressive. James over there?
Colson is here. James is not here tonight.
I have artwork here for Paige. That was a nice toucan there. I could tell what that was without even reading it. Can you tell us why you chose a toucan?
Well, this is a guy that needed something to do about toucans. Can you do a picture of them?
You did a nice job. Looks just like it. Excellent.
Why don't we have them stand with their picture in front of the board and get a picture of them? So parents want to do it as well.
Who's Jaden? Jaden? Thank you. Picture you? There we go. Did you get yours? There you go. Yours, good job. There we go. And you should help people generally. Make sure your head's higher. There we go. That's awesome.
and asking those great questions.
Thanks.
Much appreciated.
Okay, awesome.
Next up, I'd like to have Mrs. Wazardi and Mrs. Gazrowski come forward with student council
Thank you, everyone. Good job.
representatives to talk about student council at Kennedy Elementary School.
Hi, we are members of the Kennedy Student Council. My name is Liam Ralph.
I'm Kara Bryan.
And I'm Cece Kucher.
Tonight, we want to tell you about the Kennedy Student Council, how we are trying to make Kennedy and our community a better place. We are currently in our second year of student council at Kennedy Elementary School. We started this club last year so that our students could have leadership opportunities and have a stronger voice in our school.
The goal of Kennedy Student Council is to make a positive impact on our school community and the world, to make a difference through a commitment to serve, care, and work hard. During the last two years, we have participated in many different groups, service projects, including gathering warm coats for kids who do not have jackets for our brutal winters, gathering food for families who may not be able to provide for themselves during the holidays, raising money through a coin drive for good causes towards the MAC Fund, gathering personal care items and gifts for elderly during the holidays, engaging in school beautification projects to make our Kennedy school grounds more pleasing to the eye, inviting families and community.
In addition to these group service projects, students in student council are required to complete four hours of community service independently. As a few examples, members of our student council club have taken care of neighbors' pets, watered neighborhood gardens, cleaned bookshelves at the Grafton Public Library, helped to make and serve dinners for homeless families, provided snacks for a support group at the VA Hospital, helped with neighbors' housework and yard work. We really enjoy our monthly meetings. We meet during lunch recess and we work on different service projects, support each other, engage in team-building activities such as minute-to-minute games, and encourage each other to do our best as members of our school.
Some of the future projects include the Grafton City Cleanup, building buddy benches for playgrounds, and hosting a winter fun night for the Kennedy families. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come to speak to you this evening and please know how special it is to be part of Kennedy Elementary School.
Thank you very much to our student council students and also our advisors. And it's important to note that two years ago, there was not a student council at Kennedy and it came as a groundswell effort to provide a great opportunity for kids, for leadership, service, and opportunity within our school. And it's really taken off and we're so proud of them. Thank you. Next up, we have our Girls on the Run Club, brought to you by Mrs. Mangan, Mrs. Bryan. If you could please come to the front, we'd appreciate that.
My name is Kara Bryan and I am fortunate to have an opportunity to participate in Girls on the Run at Kennedy Elementary School. Girls on the Run was founded in 1996 and today serves over 1 million girls across the country.
We recently finished our second season at Kennedy. During the fall, we meet twice a week for 10 weeks and we finish seasons by running 5K at Bay Shore Mall with dozens of Girls on the Run chapters from around the area.
The mission of this club is to inspire girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident using phone lessons that include running. Girls on the Run is for girls in grades three to five. We do activities such as running, playing games, and talking about important issues. We learn to celebrate ourselves as a unique individuals. Each session is led by a trained coach to guide us and mentor us.
We learn about team building, helping our community, reaching goals, and being a good friend. Each season, Girls on the Run chapters focus on a project to help fund a charity and serve our community. This year, we planned a way to help sick children in Wisconsin by planning a coin war fundraiser for the whole school. In five days, we were able to raise $1,010.43 for the Make the Wish Foundation. This foundation helps make the wishes of children with life-threatening illnesses come true.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie and I'm in grade four. And my favorite part about Girls on the Run is running and being part of a team. And what I learned most is how to stop gossiping.
Hi, my name's Brittany and I'm in grade four. And one reason why I like Girls on the Run is because you can be yourself.
This is awkward. Thank you.
I'm Ariana and my favorite part about Girls on the Run is when we got to run the 5K. And one thing that... And what I have... And one of my favorite things that I learned is that you can always be positive. There's always a chance to be positive, no matter what situation you're in.
My name's Abby Taft and I'm in third grade. I'm nominating Dr. Gunderson because he's awesome.
So what we do at the end of our sessions is as a way for the girls to recognize their hard work and their teamwork together. Every session, the girls will nominate one or two of their peers for somebody that has encouraged them or done something positive for them for that day. So the girls just nominated Dr. Gunderson for an energy award. So Dr. Gunderson, maybe if you can stand in the middle.
To dance?
Yeah, to dance. This is our second year, Dr. Gunderson. He was our DJ one day for running and he's seen the energy awards. Usually we have about 19 girls, but we'll see if we can echo that enthusiasm here. Ready, girls?
I wish they nominated a DJ.
Ready? All right, girls, ready? One, two, three.
That was very appreciated, but it was not on the script. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming tonight. A little bit more about Kennedy Elementary School. The final portion of the presentation focuses on Kennedy Elementary School as a learning institution, as a place that we gather. And I wanted to take a moment to highlight a little bit about what it means to be a part of Kennedy School. Our mission statement reads that "It's everybody helping everyone learn every day." And while the words are simple, they certainly apply to our efforts as teachers, as students, as family members, as community members, and what we seek to pursue each day. And I believe that we are able to pursue these great ideals for two different reasons. The first of which includes our warm and generous culture, our sense of community, and the level of openness that we have as a school. I believe that this quote really embodies what we seek to identify with, with our ideals and with our heart, saying, "Can our school be so welcoming, so inviting, and so comfortable that every person who walks through the doors believes they are going to have an amazing experience?" That has obvious implications for children who come through, whether they're four years old or in fifth grade. But what does that mean for a staff member? Or what does it mean for a parent who's coming for a challenging and difficult conference? What does it mean for a visitor or a volunteer? How about for a director who's coming to help with trauma-informed schools and present to a staff? Or a director who's coming to do holistic scoring protocols for second-grade math assessment? Or a director who's coming to work with other initiatives within our school? But this, I believe, really embodies what we seek to show with our hearts at Kennedy School. But beyond having big hearts, beyond having an awesome sense of community, Kennedy is a school that's able to think strategically, work systematically, be objective, and really rally around some of the most powerful school initiatives that we have. I love this quote and it reads, "Excellence is never an accident. It is a result of high intention, sincere effort, intelligent direction, skillful execution, and the vision to see obstacles as opportunities." Where our Kennedy teachers are working very hard together, moving forward, teaching and learning objectives and initiatives, working to make Kennedy a very high-quality learning place for our children. And when you put these two traits together of a warm and welcoming school with a school that thinks strategically, that embodies frameworks and processes, that's how Kennedy moves forward, our school motto, our school district motto of every student, every day. Because we're able to put those two traits together very consistently. I close tonight with a picture of an open road going through the country. The reason I selected this picture is because it symbolizes a couple of things to me. It symbolizes that our path is clear for a while, that Kennedy is ready, that it's poised to move forward with our initiatives, with improvement processes, and with great student growth. But also, there's a spot on the picture where the road disappears and you can't quite see over that hill. And such is life, and such is life in a school district, where we're never sure what's going to happen way far out. However, with our traits, with our culture, and our commitment to excellence, I believe that Kennedy is poised to address any challenge that we're going to face in the future. So with that, I close and I give the board my thank you. It's an honor to present to you tonight. And again, I'm extremely humbled and honored that we had such a great turnout with our students and family members and staff members here tonight. Thank you very much, Kennedy Elementary School and the Grafton School District.
Thank you, Dr. Gunderson. That was great. Okay, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. For those of you who would like to not wait for the rest of the meeting, you can leave now. We'll give you the opportunity to cut out while we wait to move on.
But I'm just wondering if that limits us a little bit. I always go back to the example of when we had Mr. Cavara as a principal who was a Marine. I would be comfortable having a trained Marine who's a principal defending our kids. I don't think, like the lady said tonight, you know, whatever the weekend courses to learn, you know, how to handle a gun, wouldn't be enough for me to be comfortable saying, yeah, okay, carry it in our schools. But if we had trained professionals, I would just say maybe beyond, and I discussed this with some of the people who reached out to me, would you be okay with that? If somebody had that level of training who represented our school district as well. So I'm, I think that makes sense, but I'm, that's open for discussion as well. But, so I don't know if we want to limit it to just law enforcement, but maybe open it up to that. That's where I would.
I would think as a board, we would want to vehemently oppose anything that takes local control away from us regardless of what the ultimate purpose is. I said, I just can't stand the fact of somebody in Madison trying to tell us what to do and how to run our school, whether it's this, whether it's first, you know, when to start our school. They, they start, and then they start telling you how to do everything, and we should fight everything that takes our local control of how we decide how to run our district away from us. And premise our opposition on that, and those are all great points and the details, but don't lose sight of the big picture of, of how this takes our local control away from us. One more erosion of the step so that we're, you know, beholden to people 90 miles away trying to tell us how to do things. I'm, I'm opposed to that, and I would hope that the board going forward would, would take that into account because we're, we're fighting other things where that is, is being foisted upon us, and the more control we keep here, the better off we're going to be as a district going forward, regardless of whether it's this issue or any other issue that comes down the pike.
Good. Okay, so Greg, so we'll bring this back. If there's other questions or thoughts that you have or more information you're looking for, we have a couple of things here that we'll bring back, we will bring back to the table and have that discussion then at our next meeting as well. Okay? And then this past week, on Wednesday and Thursday, Topher and I were at the State Education Conference, and on Wednesday Suzanne and Diana had joined us, and I've asked each of them to sort of share a brief snippet of maybe a session that they attended, and that'd sort of give you some insight into some things and how that affects us and moving forward with some ideas with that.
So I attended Baird's session, and he just gave an economic update on the municipal bond market. And I got a few things out of there. One, that rates have gone up since the end of October, so we've seen some upward pressure on that. Also, they highlighted the importance of credit rating and to explain what the cost of a downgrade in your credit rating would be. For instance, a typical, like right now we're in AA2. If we were to be downgraded to AA3, it would probably increase our borrowing costs by 10 basis points. What a $40 million bonding, what that would cost us for a $40 million borrowing would be about $25,000, and increased interest costs per year for about a total of a half million dollars, or a half million dollars. So that was, I thought, some good tangling information from Baird.
Good, Ben.
So I went to a session on onboarding and engaging new employees. It was a session held by Milwaukee School District, the principal, or I'm sorry, the superintendent and some of the school board members, and they went through their process for how they bring on new employees and support them. I took some things away, some things that we are doing. First of all, their philosophy, what they, what they look at maintaining is hire, engage, develop, and retain. So we have a strong hiring process in the district. We have great success with the teachers that we hired. We have new teacher induction, so to speak, three days, two and a half days in August. We're doing some similar things that Milwaukee shared, which I thought was great. One of them, by the way, was that bus tour, and it's highly regarded in Milwaukee as well. Teachers, new teachers really like seeing the community and being able to kind of live it and talk about it and learn about it. One of the takeaways that I am going to be working on through the budget process is the mentoring program and bringing back a process in which we pay mentors, thinking about a tier mentor approach, new teachers to education versus new teachers just asking that have four or more years' experience. New teachers typically, in the first three years, and what, and their needs are different based on, you know, a lot of, a lot of the learning that happens with new teachers versus just learning about a district as a teacher who's, who's had some experience. So that's one of, one of the things that I, I'm going to be working on with Topher and Jeff through the budget process and bringing that back, what does it look like? And then how do we keep that sustained professional development throughout the school year? That was another big piece that Milwaukee highlighted in their presentation. And then one takeaway that I, I forgot about that I had learned in the previous district comes from the Studer Foundation, and they're learning, and, and Milwaukee has implemented this, and they do a new, a new employee interview at 30 days and at 90 days with standardized questions, it's like three questions, all new employees. It doesn't matter if they're teachers or support staff of any kind, with that real idea of building relationships and finding out how they are doing and if they feel that they're fit for the district. And I remember doing that in my previous district with new employees in my building. Principal usually carries about, and it was a really great opportunity to hear how things were going in a different way and make suggestions if needed. So I'd like to think about bringing that into the district as well as part of maintaining and, you know, the new staff and making sure that they feel safe and supported. So that, those were some great takeaways from Milwaukee, and a lot of, a lot of the success we had with our onboarding of new employees.
Good. Suzanne?
I attended the Open Role and Informational Session, the Special Needs Scholarship Program. The 16th, 17th school year was the first year that, that scholarship program came in Detroit. The intent of the program is to equalize opportunities for students with special needs to attend private schools through a state-funded scholarship. So a local law firm had put the presentation on. She went through how students qualify for the program, what districts are required to do as resident districts to inform their families, and the also the financial impact that the Special Needs Scholarship Program has on public school districts.
And then a couple of sessions that I went to, one was on the hiring of and retaining of millennials, and they shared some data that a third of millennials are living with their parents. And so they were talking about various things that millennials are looking for. One of the things that caught me by surprise, that they said that, that they have heard, this is an insurance group, the financial group that was presenting it, and they said that pet insurance is a benefit that millennials are valuing, which I had never heard of before. So I didn't know you could even get pet insurance, but that was an interesting piece that goes with that. Saw Mosquito Norway talk about their referendum process that they'd followed, and one of the items that they talked about that they did, which I thought was a great little nugget, is they talked about things that, items that had been brought forward by the, by their committee that they'd had, that didn't get added onto the master plan. They kept that into a document so that if there, if there was some savings, some cost savings along the way, that you automatically had it set up that way as a reminder of what we'd sort of, the committee had already said was something that they were looking at. So, and if there, I mean, if there isn't cost savings that go along, that as you move forward in your budgeting, that you're remembering that we did value this at one point and sort of staying true, true to all the work the committee members have done and boards have done and so forth. So a couple of different sessions that I think were very timely. Wanted to share, appreciate the opportunity to go down there. It was down in Milwaukee at the convention center down there, and so it was close and a great opportunity for us to be able to go down there and come back for that, for that. I have a couple of other items that are not on here. One, one that I just received an email today from, with sad news that poured onto the board from, that the Grafton Chambers Executive Director Pam King, her dad had passed away. So we want to send our condolences and our thoughts and prayers to her family. We will be sending flowers from our district to her and her family, but wanted to publicly, you know, thank Pam. She's a great person in our community, and for that loss, we really, our hearts, our thoughts go after her and her family. And a reminder that we have coming up this week on Thursday, the 4K information and registration night, so a big night in our district. So it's, it's held in the GES gym. You've seen it in the paper, it's been, well, hopefully you've seen the paper. It's been on the sign forever, emails, blasts, and so forth. So that's a big night coming up on the 26th, starting at 6:30 in the, in the gymnasium, and then from then on, from the 27th through February 9th, it's occurring at all of our schools, all of our elementary schools from then, but that is coming up there. I got this this morning. It's the career, it's a proclamation from Dr. Evers, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, that February 1st through 28th is Career and Technical Education Month. So I thought it'd be appropriate to, instead of waiting for that, I'd at least read it. There's no action needs occur, but at least have the proclamation read. Whereas the Association for Career and Technical Education has designated February 1st through 28th, 2017, as Career and Technical Education Month, and whereas Career and Technical Education increases graduation rates and improves academic performance through meaningful experiences, thus improving the quality of their education, engaging students, preparing them for careers in post-secondary education, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and in their communities, and whereas Career and Technical Education Programs provide Americans with a school-to-careers connection and the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, which fosters productivity, innovation, and entrepreneurship in business and industry, and contributes to America's leadership in the global marketplace, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, and whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators with business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Tony Evers, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 28th, 2017, as Career and Technical Education Month in the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all citizens. And along with that, and I will not read these next two proclamations for the sake of time, but it is also saying that February 5th through 11th is also, there's four different weeks that they're promoting. We haven't, we haven't, they have two of these clubs in our, in our high school. February 5th through 11th is FBLA Week, which is Future Business Leaders of America, as well as February 5th through 11th is our Skills USA Week. So the National Skills USA Association is also being recognized on February 5th through 11th. So we want to recognize especially our career and tech ed teachers. I see one of them in the audience tonight, but at the middle school we have Robin Morgan, we have Nicole Water and Lori Mathias, and at Grafton High School we have Sandy Giuliani, Brenda Stilo, Mike Dodge, Kevin Gain, and I see Carl Hader here in the audience. So we want to recognize them and thank them for all their work. And last but not least, something that has occurred previously in the district is I had a resident, Joanne Danforth, email me about walking in the Grafton School District, and in the past she has done that. She'd actually done it with Mr. McCormick when he was here as high school principal, and she'd worked with him and had a badge, had done a background check and so forth, and had walked in the high school. I'd spoken with Terry about this and, and opening it up to two different schools. So we'd have one in the morning and one in the afternoon. You can see the flyer up here that we'll be sending out. She had, Joanne has been great to work with and very flexible, and she has recommended that we send it to the senior center and, and connect with them and give this an opportunity for people. We work with VIP. Joe Corb has worked to be able to develop two different IDs. So what we'd do is we'd have two different IDs. One would be orange and one would be gray, and it will say Walking Pass. And the, the idea would be that the orange one is, would say for both John Long Middle School and Grafton High School. And so for that, we would ask people who would want that to have a, a background check. So we would know if you've done wearing the orange one, then you could be either John Long or at Grafton High School. We're going to have students that are in the building in the morning. These people are going to be walking. Want to make sure our schools are safe in the morning. The high school, we also want our high school to be safe, but we have a lot of people who come in at 3:30, 4 o'clock with all the different events that we have going on that are in the building nonstop as it is. So we would also have an opportunity for them to just be able to have this and be able to walk in the school. We're going to have our logo on the back with our motto of every student every day, as well as the hours that they can walk and so forth. So they will come to district office. Leslie will be our contact person for this. If she's not available, Joy will be trained as well, so they'll be able to get their picture taken, we'll print that off for them, and then they would have an opportunity to walk, if they want to walk in the morning, you know, from 6 to 7 o'clock at, at John Long, and then from 3:30 to 5, walking in the high school as an opportunity for people. She's starting this next Monday. She still has her ID badge from when she did it previously, so has kept track of that. So she's starting on Monday, and once we get, we'll get this running, up and running on Monday, so we'll be sending it out this week, but as an informational item for the board, something that's happened in the past that we are continuing in that way. And that completes my report.
Excellent. And we'll move right on to see the potential referendum update items.
Yeah, so as we mentioned earlier, we had Kapoor come in and do a traffic study. They had two engineers at Kennedy Elementary, Woodview Elementary, John Long Middle School, and as well as Grafton High School. They had two, two engineers at both the morning drop-off time as well as the afternoon pickup, pickup time. Jamie, Topher and I met with two of their leaders of the company to discuss their preliminary findings, looking at the, the maps, making sure they had an understanding that really everything is on the table, that we need to, you know, not have so much parking over here and have it this way, or setting up the route, whatever it may be. They feel comfortable that they'll be able to come back with a recommendation that will stay within the budget that Hoffman has set for the various parking, but it probably will look different, the final version will look different with that traffic study as they complete that. So I thought within the next month, they'll be able to have a, a completed recommendation. We'll bring that to you, have them come in and take questions and sort of have a discussion about that. So, so that's been, been ongoing for that. The athletic fields financing options is one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting, and it was timely that Topher was able to attend the Baird discussion on interest rates, and, you know, unfortunately they're ticking up since beginning of November. And, and so Howard, so that's one piece of it, as well as Howard, taking away from fund balance, what would that look like as we look at our credit score and so forth? So I'm going to turn over to Topher, and he's going to walk us through some of the research that he's come up with or through working with Baird.
So I've included a memo that kind of outlined some of this, with those varsity soccer, and then bringing varsity baseball and varsity softball over to high school. We've looked at two primary options for financing this outside of a referendum. One was using fund balance, and the other was using borrowing authority. And so some of the advantages to using fund balance would be that basically you wouldn't impact operating budget, so that would basically be a minimal impact to your operating budget when you were to be taken away from your classroom. The downside to that would be that potentially we could have a negative impact to our credit rating, and I talked about before, earlier, what that cost would be. The Baird ransom scenarios in which they, they drew down our fund balance to see how it would affect our credit rating. While the scorecard doesn't guarantee that we would be downgraded, there is some risk that there would be a downgrade with that. In addition, for example, using a million dollar fund balance, that million dollars would count as shared cost, which would then be a negative impact to our state aid, a fairly significant one in one year. On the other side of the coin, there's borrowing authority under the revenue limit. Now, the downside of using that is you would impact the operating budget, so any debt payments you would make would take away what you have available for the classroom for maintenance. The benefit to that, there would be no impact to equalization aid, because that would exist within the revenue limit. So looking at those options and discussing with Baird and talking amongst administration, we're recommending that we use borrowing authority with the idea that it would be a short-term period, for example, five years, and we would use fund balance to make those payments. So what that does basically, it gives us a few, helps us reach some goals with how we fund this. The one, it would minimize the impact to the operating budget. So instead of those payments having to be taken out of the classroom, you'd be using fund balance to make those debt payments. You would avoid a large, one-time negative impact to state aid. There would still be some impact, but it would be spread out over five years rather than looking at one large impact to state aid. It would also avoid a downgrade to our credit rating, so it wouldn't increase those borrowing costs. So that is what we're recommending. Are there any questions?
What's our fund balance? Is it like 4 million?
4.7 million. So using a million, that would bring us down to 3.7s. It was just, it was a large enough percentage hit where we lost points in the credit score that the Baird ran for us.
What's the current percentage?
Our fund balance is about 20%. Our general fund balance would stay above 15% if we use a million dollars. And essentially, we'd be looking at using fund balance, we'd just be spreading that use over five years instead of using it all at once.
The existing authority that we have expires March of 2018.
Correct.
Can we draw 100% of this amount, shorten it to five years against that authority, even if it's not used completely by 18?
Yeah, we can use that, and then however we search for the payments is irrelevant, but we have access to issue of that through March of 2018.
And that, the impact on the operating budget is a 1.1 billion dollar?
Correct. It would if we were not to use fund balance to make payments.
Well, you know, at the last meeting, we made a commitment to doing this project and to doing it outside the referendum, and that was, was great to hear a creative way to do it that has the least amount of impact on both of those things, fund balance, borrowing, as well as operating. So it's a, I think it's a great way to get that job. Any other thoughts?
With the timing of the payback from the, from fund balance, the time such that we haven't drawn enough off of fund balance yet, because I, assuming the referendum passes, I know we're not borrowing all that money at once. I mean, it's in, is it two pieces?
It is, yeah.
Could it potentially affect the second round of that?
I think the, the first round of borrowing would have a much bigger impact on our credit rating. So for example, 29, $29 million of borrowing would have more of an impact on credit rating than spending down potentially $400,000 in fund balance, because we may have surpluses in a given year so that we wouldn't necessarily spend, be spending down fund balance by an higher amount.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been unusual, but with our insurance rebate, with various things that have happened in the last two years, we've had $700,000 put into fund balance. So those are unique situations. We're not, and we're not budgeting for that to continue, but those are unique things that occurred that hopefully will, you know, we'll be able to continue to stay true to our budget and have an excess that will help in that way. But that's something that we'd be looking at as well, as Topher mentions.
When do we put a timeline together for that? When do you want to put that on the agenda so that we talk, so we keep that on the front burner? So the athletic facilities. I mean, we, we made a commitment.
I think the discussion is, is, and I think it's a good discussion, and I was having a discussion with, with Mark about this, is like, do we, do you make commitment before the referendum is voted upon and, and start moving forward with that? Is it dependent upon the referendum passing? Like, I think that's the thing that the board has to sort of grapple with. The soccer fields, you know, the reason, the logic of pulling the athletic piece out of the referendum is that the athletic piece, the soccer field needs to be, it needs to be addressed. That, that's a safety issue. It's also causing us not to be able to play games. The, is the remodeling of the JV baseball field, if we wanted to save money, if we wanted to just remodel the JV baseball field, that wouldn't cost us as much to bring the varsity here and bring softball here at the same time. So we need to address the soccer fields. That needs to be addressed, and it needs to be done as quickly as possible because of the safety issue that would go with that. Do those other two pieces need to go along with that? If we were to need this, our borrowing to address other projects that may come along with GES that may occur with the referendum or not to pass? So we're trying to be, I think, you know, the board needs to, to think through that, that piece of it, but we can, we can have a resolution that would, we have the long-term or the short-term borrowing authority and can work with Point of Beginning to say, when could you begin working on the soccer field? If you were to start at this date, when could that be ready for, for play again? Can that happen before next fall? Does that need to occur over the winter time? What does that look like? We don't have that data yet.
I did have a, I'm sorry, I did have a conversation with Point of Beginning at the, at the convention, and we, we would need a 12-week window. And I've talked with our athletic director about scheduling that and how flexible we could be in terms of starting work in mid-May so that we're ready for September 1st start.
I guess, you know, part of the question is, are we committed to doing all those things? Like you said, the soccer field has to be done. Are we committed to bringing the softball and baseball fields to, to the high school? As I saw the nod, nodding around the table last time, I think we're committed to that. I, I don't think that's changed. If it has changed in anybody's mind, we should talk about that now. Otherwise, if it hasn't, we should move forward to, and in my view, you might not agree, but irrespective of the referendum, we can get that job done. We can, we could be moving this forward before the election happens in April. But we need to, we need to get that ball rolling.
My hesitancy with that is that if the referendum doesn't pass, and we've committed those funds, $100 million to that, and we still have GES there, are we going to be dealing with issues there that we need to direct those funds?
I remember when Kristin Savicinski sat there and she said, you, you can't think that way because we won't have the funds to address the things we need to address. It's like, there's no, there's really no other way to do it. You almost have to bank on the notion that we have to get a referendum passed because that wouldn't, if something drastic happened, that, that amount of money wouldn't touch it anyway. I understand what you're saying. I know what you mean, but that feels like that wouldn't, wouldn't touch the need. But I, we could wait. We could, if we push it off after April, does, does that restrict Point of Beginnings too much to, on their timeline? Do they need to be notified before, before that?
Well, I'm assuming we wouldn't look to start the soccer field before the end of the girls' season, the spring season?
Yeah, you're not going to be, yeah, yeah.
Right, so May would be the earliest. So the outcome will be known relative to the referendum. And the question is, do you make a full commitment to getting this done no matter what? And I think I'd be more inclined to, to support Mark in that. I think, you know, for my own sense, we need, we should do all of those things, but of course, they'd be continued upon, is that the best use of the next million dollars that we spend? We, I think everyone's committed to safety of our playing surfaces, but, and soccer is a safety issue, and we need to address that particular issue. If the referendum weren't to pass, is the baseball field, you know, does that, where does that rank in the order of priorities relative to safety? I, I think we can demonstrate our commitment to getting this done, keep it out of the referendum, and then the timing is such that the start, that Point of Beginnings we move forward is going to be after that anyway. I think we need to get a formal plan from them as to when they would start, in two planes. If, if the referendum passes, schedule it out for the whole thing. If it doesn't pass, here's a schedule just for the soccer.
And I haven't talked to Jamie about this, I apologize for asking this here, but like, have, have we heard from Point of Beginning, like, if we were to say yes, we're ready to move on this, how long do they need? Like, this isn't going to be like, we're going to, we can't be able, I'm assuming we aren't going to be able to tell them on April 5th, we're ready to go, and they're going to have it ready by middle of May. So, you know, I'm assuming, okay, so that's a discussion we could have, to say, what kind of lead time do they need as well? And, that's what I'm assuming as well, that they're going to need lead time with other events that they have going on and projects they have going on to even be able to plan out that. And I don't know, I don't know, you know, if Kevin's talked to Coach Arnold to say, is, is that a better time? Is, is the middle of May as you're getting ready for playoffs and you don't, then you don't have a home field, and then you're going to miss the first couple of weeks of the fall season better than trying to make it through another fall and then, and then do it over the winter time, you know, immediately when it's over? Those are all discussions that we would need to figure out. You're a soccer guy, like, I mean, thinking through when the calendar falls.
Soccer guy sitting right back there. Mr. Bergman, when is the soccer season over in the, in the spring?
Girl's season typically would be based, depending on the hour of the homie, who might get the playoffs, and you might go into June potentially, depending on how the homies can get. Usually the state playoffs are right around school, get out. So I'd say late May or June.
So you might be looking at a two-tier project. I don't think we could do anything until Topher talks to Point of Beginnings and find out, what do you need? Is this a two-tier project? Because I'm assuming Don is not going to want either a problem at the end of his girl's season or a problem at the beginning of his boy's season, and this might be a two-tier project anyway.
Yeah, I think that, when you say 12 weeks, I know soccer schedule and when the playoffs and grappling typically are in that, in that mix, and you're going to want that field at the end, that's a tough piece to lose. Hate to think of living through another fall, but that's, that might be the way it is, or maybe there is an alternative that we could look at leasing a facility for some of those games with that. So there's some work we can do for that, and how we want to word that and so forth with the resolution. The key is that the board come to an agreement that this is going to be funded outside of the referendum, because that leads us into the next two topics, and that affects that. As long as the board is in agreement that this will be funded outside of that, then that's, I think then we're okay to bring back other information to you.
That's the case.
Okay, so we'll bring some more information back to you. We have some thoughts that we'll bring back for you, but we wanted to show the work that we've done for that. As you look at number D with the initial resolution, I think it's good to sort of reflect and sort of, you know, coming to this point in this whole process, to sort of look back to say, well, what brought us here? And, you know, we've heard this a number of times, but I think it's good to repeat what this process has been. You know, it started back in 2012 when the board took a look at all the facilities that we had and let's do an assessment of our facilities. In 2013 and 2014, some of those major upgrades were addressed immediately, with over $3.5 million being spent over the last four years on those maintenance items. So those most pressing items were addressed. April 2016, the facilities committee had recommended a $49.5 million referendum, 47.5 on academics, 1.8 on athletics. That was brought forward in a vote. The referendum failed, the first goes two different questions. First question failed 55 to 45. The second question, related to athletics, had failed 52 to 48. Following that, the board held listening sessions, and then in June of 2016, the board established Fund 46 with the goal of having a million dollars in that budget over the five years for capital improvement. So by June 30th of 2021, we will have a million dollars in there. There's currently, including the budget that we have this year, there's $460,000 that will be added, that will be completed in Fund 46 by the end of this year. So we're well on our way to reaching that goal of a million dollars in there. Facilities advisory suffered listening sessions, facilities advisory was committed, it started. We had 55 people that applied to be on the committee. Paul Lorrie, Clayton Riddle, and Mark Kahler chaired that for the board. We had, they selected 20 community members that were from a wide range of perspectives, and we had eight staff members that were also on that. There were a number of meetings that occurred. We figured out that there was, with building tours and committee meetings just themselves and the time that was spent, that minutes were recorded, that over 25 and a half hours by each person was spent doing that process and coming up with, looking at what was presented before, and then bringing forward a new project that would meet the needs of our district, because we knew that the needs hadn't changed. There was nine options that were discussed. We had listening sessions with the community that then resulted in further discussion at the committee level. We took out items that wouldn't last 20 years to pay out of Fund 41. So I think we have that. So we looked at $250,000 that we would say we would take out of Fund 41. I think Topher has a slide on that.
Or actually, if you want, let's go down. So there were a couple of projects at each school. So there were a couple of projects at the high school that basically what we're looking at is projects that we didn't want in the referendum that we were going to pay for that would have to be replaced in 2004, 20 years ago. So we identified some items that wouldn't last 20 years, and we pulled them out instead of funding them using Fund 41. We currently have $200,000 in Fund 41. Next year, we would have, if we continue funding it like we have, an additional $50,000. Now, these were items that had been scheduled somewhere within the next five years. So if we pull them out, we'll be able to do them using Fund 41 and not have to use the referendum to fund those projects that wouldn't necessarily last 20 years.
We also looked at items that were supposed to be failing five years from now, and we looked at those items so we can start benchmarking those for those Fund 46. There's more than, as we outline and continue moving forward, there's more than $1 million of projects that are still out there with various major roofing pieces, tennis courts, things like that, that are big-ticket items that will require us to continue funding Fund 46 and continuing to budget accordingly for that. So those are the pieces that we looked at in our budgeting process. The final option that the committee recommended was, it was called the three-campus option, and that was where GES was eliminated. Those students were sent to Kennedy Elementary School and Woodview Elementary School. Both Woodview and Kennedy were added on to create three-section classrooms, so you'd have three-sections at each grade level at each school, as well as adding a gym because of the added students, which will allow their gym cafeteria, cafeteria that they use now to be just the cafeteria. John Long Middle School will have some infrastructure upgrades. That's the one that was addressed the most in 2000 and has really suited their needs well, but there are some infrastructure upgrades that need to occur at the high school. Career and tech ed is being addressed with autos and metals being added on to. There's a scene shop that's being added for the fine arts, which, as Carl had said at our last committee meeting, when that's not being used by the fine arts, it's also going to be an opportunity for the woods classrooms to possibly use that for building some of their various construction pieces. So we'll have a dual use there. It'll be remodeling our science labs that haven't been touched in 45 years. We've talked about Project Lead the Way, add of that in 2013. So remodeling that, the locker rooms that are being added. There's a, with GES going away, the one station gym is being torn down, so there's a need for another gym at the high school. So there's a gym that's being added. With the kitchen being torn down at GES, that will move, the central kitchen that serves all of our schools will be added to the high school, which results in us having to add some more space for the commons. And we have, we've added four new classrooms, one which will service, well, two that will serve as special ed students, one for our severely severe students who in 1970s weren't at school and were either at home or in a hospital. And so we don't have facilities that are designed for them. Having on that side of the building near where the parking will be is going to be more appropriate for them and their families and so forth, and make it more of a conducive environment for them to be part of our school environment for that. So since the option was brought forward, it was at 41-243. On November 2nd, we had our listening sessions. It was actually at 47-293 then. So from 47-293 went down to 41-243. The board has since worked on this option and looking at various pieces and asking questions and moving things for us to be able to say that now it's at 39-930. Those options, all three options have never included athletics. Athletics has always been a separate topic. It hasn't, the facilities advisory committee made a recommendation to move forward with that. They were saying with one piece of it, but those numbers would go up if we had athletics in there. So we're comparing apples to apples. So I want to commend the board on the work of listening to community residents saying that, you know, this was too much, we can't afford that. What are your needs versus your wants? And really having a process that has taken, starting at $47 million with those nine options, and now having it at 39-930 is really, I think, indicative of the board's desire to listen to the community for that. So that's what sort of brings us to this initial resolution authorizing the general obligation bonds for that. So we have some language that we've worked with our attorney to have those pieces in there. A piece of this mix is the financing that would occur with that, and I'll turn that over to Topher.
All right, so Baird ran the numbers for us for financing $39.9 million in bonds. And, okay, there we go. So basically, there would be two issues. First one in 2017 of $29.9 million, that would be at a rate of 4.5 percent. And then a second issuance in 2018 of $10 million. You'll notice the lower rate, any time you issue just under $10 million is a bank-qualified issue, and so you tend to get lower rates for that. So they're using a 4.5 on that first issue and a 4 percent interest rate on that second issue. There is room. They have a buffer on the first issuance of 60 to 70 basis points for that potentially to increase. If it doesn't, then we're going to get a better rate. And then about 80 to 90 basis points on that second issuance. So they do have a cushion built in in case rates do go up. Each of the issuances would be paid off over 20 years. The interest payments would total $23.3 million. Now, as we increase our debt payments, that does affect state aid. We would lose, Baird estimated, we'd lose about $6.6 million in state aid based off of what we're paying in debt this current year. So this is what if the mill rate, the tax impact looks like per year, per $1,000. So blue debt is our current debt, and we have been able to make some advanced payments on the current debt so that we do have quite a bit falling off next year. So basically, if the green debt, which is new debt, would be added on and result in a 66 cents increase in our mill rate per $1,000 of property value compared to 2018. Now, included in the new debt, the new debt impact is principal payments. We also include the interest payments. We also include that lost state aid. They include that in that impact. So all of those pieces are represented in the potential increase or the increase in the tax rate in this funding scenario. So basically, what that would look like on the tax bill, now, the current debt that we have is going to decrease next year. That would be on a $100,000 home, that would be a decrease in your bill of about $72. The new debt that would come on would in and of itself be an increase of $138 on a $100,000 home. What that net would be, would be a $66 increase. So your 2018 tax bill per $100,000 of property would be $66 higher than it was in 2017. Basically, if you're monthly budgeting for those mortgage payments, it would be $5.50 per month increased mortgage payments.
Explain again why state aid, why we do state aid?
Sure. Basically, in the formula, because we have more property value per member than the average school district, we lose state aid any time we increase spending. And that includes spending in Fund 39 or revenue-approved debt. So in 2018, with a past referendum, our debt payments would increase. So Baird takes a look at that, they see that our debt payments would increase in 2018. That would affect our 2019 state aid. So they actually structure the payments so that it allows to absorb those future, the future loss of state aid, keeping a fairly stable impact on the new debt.
Okay, questions for Topher?
Just to be clear, nothing within this resolution says that this is the way we have to finance this.
Correct.
And so there are other scenarios that could be wrong.
Yes.
Some have suggested that perhaps in the short term, items that are of shorter duration should be financed over a shorter duration. Other, you know, maintenance items, for instance, maybe finance over a shorter duration. Construction, maybe finance over a longer duration. What about energy efficiency grants and other things that might be available? I just want to make sure that there's nothing in this resolution. I didn't see anything.
The resolution does not approve the actual financing or how it's financed. It just allows us to be able to.
Any questions for Topher? So we look for a motion to approve this recommendation. Last time we did this, it felt anticlimactic because, of course, the work had all been done, and we didn't really discuss it much because it had been discussed to death. But I do think it's fair for the board to at least go around the table and give its reflections on the process. So we can do that in a discussion format, or we can just go person to person. I think it's fair for the public to hear our impressions and reflections on how we got here and what it means to the district. So if you want, if someone wants to throw it out there, go ahead, Mark.
I guess, being some of the folks out here who are being good with this, especially getting on the board after it failed, I did have the background on the details that went into the last proposal, the last referendum, having fed through this in great detail this time around. Listening sessions, we started gathering the community input, forming the facilities committee. We're deliberate people, I guess I would say, that were very passionate from different angles, which I think was great. We got different perspectives from different people, which all came together. I think the process was very good. I learned a lot. I feel the community, those that want the information, it's out there, it's available. I think we've come a long ways. I look back to, we had the discussion about GES, and that was kind of a winchpin. I think it's really more cost-effective just to eliminate it than to repair or replace it. As we talk about Fund 41, Fund 46, all those things, pulling the athletics out, I think that demonstrates to the community, part of what we heard was funding things ourselves not through referendum. So we're taking steps in Fund 41 to address some short-term things, Fund 46 to address some long-term things. Those are definitely things we heard through our listening sessions. So I'm definitely in agreement where this is going and support it. We've made some great strides to get to where we are, and I don't think we've compromised what has been put together. And there are some cost savings down the road. I mean, one of the things that was pretty obvious, we were going to reduce the number of facilities. That's going to have a cost savings in and of itself in the future. So I think it is very conscious, very deliberate, and very well thought out by a lot of people.
Richard?
I was, I guess, part of the first process, the last failed referendum and everything that we went through there, and I do feel much better about the process, I guess, that we went through this time. I think it was maybe a little more deliberate. There were more people involved in the process, I think, from the beginning. We learned from the last one, I believe, maybe what to do, what not to do. I feel good about it. I think there's been some disappointment, maybe from some people that I've heard through the grapevine, that we did lower the amount, feeling like maybe we're not doing everything we should be doing, but I don't know, I don't think I feel that way. I think we've spent our money maybe more wisely this time and really focused in on what really needs to be done. I don't think we've missed anything. So I do feel very good about the process, and I truly hope that those who, you know, are still on the fence, thinking maybe we're not doing everything we need to be doing and might not vote for it because of it, hopefully they, you know, see the light in this process, because that, again, only part of the process is done now. I mean, once we really finalize this- I mean, once we really finalize this aspect of it and then it comes to the marketing aspect of it, then we really need to inform the public and get people on board and excited about this. So, um, I'm looking forward to that process too because I think that will really go a long way to getting the, the community excited about the, the projects. But, um, I feel very good about everything that's happened up to this point.
Well, I, I echo all the comments already. I, between the two groups that looked at this thing, we did look at 15 unique options, different options. One of which is, you know, do nothing and address just the items as they come up, maintain a budget, um, for the most pressing items as they come up. But 15 different unique options between the two different groups that looked at this. And in all cases, at least the second go-around, giving appropriate consideration to the priorities, the GES conundrum, you know, those most pressing infrastructure requirements. And, you know, if you remember, there are $20 million worth of infrastructure elements on there. To recognize that, you know, this doesn't include them all. There are still things that are out, further out, that we will use Fund 46 for. And there are those things that are closer in that we've decided to use Fund 41 for. And I think that was very deliberate. You know, that we, keep in mind, the spaces need to keep pace with curriculum changes, particularly in STEM and Project Lead the Way. And also that we have appropriate tech ed spaces. And we heard over and over again throughout the listening sessions that we have to have a high-quality, cost-effective solution. And that solution should in and of itself lead to savings. And I think, you know, reducing the number of buildings or facilities within the district provides that opportunity. We'll get more efficient systems. I know that's still something that needs to be assessed. You know, what are the, the potential operating budget savings associated with more efficient systems that we might be putting into some of these newer facilities? You know, so I, I think overall, the goal was to reduce the cost of the project, but then reduce the cost of operations moving in as well. I think, I, I think also something that this district doesn't have a big history with referendums. It's used referendum sparingly. From the history that I can find since 1972 and the high school campus was built out, there's been two referendums. One in 1996 for $2.8 million, and then the one in 2000 for $16.4 million. I know there's been a lot of talk about, uh, you know, at the listening sessions that, you know, why weren't these things taken care of? And at the end of the day, a lot of the systems that are being included in the infrastructure elements here, roughly $9 million, where many of those are systems that are 50-plus years old. They have been adequately maintained. They have been properly maintained. They're just worn out at this point in time and they need to be replaced. And I think at the end of the day, this project, while it, it is reduced in scope from the $47.5 million, it is still a very high-quality project that, that provides appropriate and exceptional spaces for our kids to learn in every day. And we've learned at the committee level that, you know, the environment is important. You know, the educators, primarily important, but the environment is critically important. And we need to provide at the top-notch environment for our kids to learn, and I think that this project does that.
I do also, um, just like Mark, I was part of the last referendum that we had. I do feel that there was a very, a more thorough process this time around where you got a lot of, um, people who had to apply for the positions to be on this referendum or the facilities committee. So I think they did a really nice job, really working out all of the details and, um, you know, collaborating with the teachers and all the administration. So I do feel that while there were two different plans that had started, the two campus versus the three campus, some wanted the two, but I think going down and agreeing on the three-campus option is just as good. I feel that there were a lot of well-thought-out plans in this. And I think we all can agree that we do need to do something and our schools need to be repaired. And it's just a better working environment for our kids and our teachers. So thanks for everything, all the work you guys do.
Following the failed referendum, Paul, the first things he said was, "The referendum failed, but the needs remain." And that's really been the linchpin of going forward to get us to the point today. Yeah, it failed, but you know what? GES didn't, it looked exactly the same the day after as it did the day before, and we still have to deal with it. And, and that's what's really led this. Costs have gone up, which meant that we've had to do more with less to get us to the point, uh, where, where we want to go. I've always tried to maintain that what we're here for is what's in the best interest of the kids of the district. And that's what we've come up with, is a plan to go forward to best meet that. Not everybody agrees with it. I don't agree with some of it. I lost the, the field house. I'm still devastated about that. I think that's a need for, for the community, but that's for a future, future time, and maybe we'll still get that. But I think the most important thing we need to look at is, we need the classrooms now to fit the modern curriculum that people like Diana and the rest of them are putting together so that we can move forward. Uh, one of the things I was going to bring up, um, about the class, the math class that Diana's going to talk about, I know for a fact that we have three seniors that have gotten admitted directly into Madison School of Engineering. And that's just the three I know about. Uh, there may have been more in other years, but I don't know of any. And I think that's phenomenal. And I think it's a testament to the curriculum that we have, and we just need to build on that to get more and more of these kids in, into, uh, schools like that directly into the engineering and the science and the technology and engineering and math classes. And if we can get the, the facilities are part of that. I mean, you can't take away from that. Fran Grant, Carl Hader, these people that are tremendous teachers, we need to have the facilities so that they can, uh, give us their expertise, their master teaching skills, so that we can push these kids up above and beyond. And that's why I support this, because it gets us into the point where we can fit our, our facilities to the modern technology that we're bringing to the classroom. And we can give these kids, and it's all about, and if you look at, at Diana saying, "It's all about options." It's about giving our kids the best possible options when they leave here into the next step. And I think this is a plan that is certainly a great stride towards getting there. And the other things are going to come with the financing, with the additional buildings, you know. Hopefully, this place explodes into, you know, more population, and we have to build more schools. I mean, that would be a great situation that we get into. And, you know, if we have that, then, then we can deal with that as they come. But this is the best plan we have right now, given where we're at.
It was truly a more transparent and engaging process this time around. It was discouraging to, uh, to lose last year, but, you know, it was the right answer. You know, I've said since we started, since I started on the board, and it, it's true, all of us here are just being stewards of how to spend other people's money. And other people said, "We did it wrong the first time, and, uh, we, we dug in and we, I think we did it much better this time." And I have to commend you three guys because, you know, there's, we talked about the time spent on that committee, which was dozens of hours by people in the community, but that was preceded by dozens of hours by, by these three. So I really appreciate the effort, you know, leading up to that, to that big effort. But, um, you know, so now that the, uh, the education and the information process starts again, a discouraging piece, uh, this morning regarding how misinformation just undermines some really well-intentioned efforts like what we're trying to do here. I talked to somebody today who said, um, it's her impression that it came out during the last referendum that we never paid for the first referendum, that no money, no principal was paid down on that 2,000 referendum. And she thought that was bad, that we only paid interest and that none of that money ever went to any maintenance items. I said, "Well, it couldn't be farther from the truth. That referendum was a success. It, it did the things it was supposed to do. We listened to the listening sessions inside the gym. It was paid for by that referendum, great facilities. The referendum did a lot of good." And as Topher showed, we're almost done paying that off. We added, we actually accelerated the payments in the last two years by a million and a half dollars. So, I mean, I understand that not everybody gets all the information. We discovered last year, it's really hard to get the information that we think people need to know to everybody. And that would just remind me today that our job, we have a big job ahead of us in terms of education. But I think we did, we've got a great job behind us in terms of really paying attention to what people said and putting this into a, um, a product that I think will be palatable to the community. The, like I said, it was engaging, it was transparent, uh, and it was a real good process. So I am very comfortable putting this forward. And unless anyone else has any other additions or corrections or questions, we need a motion to accept the, uh, the recommendation as it's, as it's printed here.
Move to accept the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds and may not, not to exceed $39,930,000 as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes. So our next item, if I can get my agenda up, is to, um, item E resolution providing for referendum election, just the details, the, uh...
Yeah, this is procedural in nature. Now we have to authorize that to hold an election to decide whether to pass or oppose it to the public. So it's procedural in nature. Briggs, our bond counsel, provided this request.
Move to adopt the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds and amount not to exceed $39,930,000.
Second.
Any questions? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes.
Excellent. Um, you know, a lot of times we talk about every student, every day, and that's, that's just an easy phrase, and it's a great phrase. And hopefully, it's something that we live each and every day in our classrooms and, and in our, in our offices and so forth. But an important piece also to remember is the Grafton Learning Community exists to prepare learners for a dynamic tomorrow. And a couple of you referenced that in your remarks, and I think that's also been something that the committee has also been thinking about. I know administration has been talking about that as, as we've talked about, how will this impact buildings and so forth? So that dynamic tomorrow is also a piece that we are, I think we are addressing in this, and we look forward to being able to do that. So that's something that we don't, we don't parrot that as much as we probably should, um, but that's also an important piece to remember. It's on the front of our webpage, and it's on various pieces of, of literature that we have, but it's an important piece to remember. Suzanne is going to walk us through our open enrollment recommendations for 2017 and 2018.
The first thing that we have up there is, um, the summary of open enrollment for 2016, '17. So this school year, we had opened 108 seats. We enrolled 26 new students to Grafton School District. Um, in addition to those 26 students, we had eight students went out of the district and wanted to continue going to school in our district, and those were our tuition waivers. We had needed those. So currently, we have 192 open-enrolled students. The next two tables are from our third Friday count of open-enrolled students in the district. And that's that total of 192 non-resident students. So 103 resident students are open-enrolled out to other districts. 11 of the 103 are attending virtual schools. 24 of the 192 incoming students are students with special needs, and that is that table that is below. And nine of the 103 resident students that open-enrolled out are students with special needs. And then the next tables just go through what districts of residence our open-enrolled in students came from. And then the next, we're going to go over that is Grafton residents that are attending other districts through open enrollment out, and the number from each district. The next table is our open enrollment history. And I'm also going to go through the net open enrollment revenue for this school year, 2016, '17. So the net revenue, um, through open enrollment is estimated to be $695,547.20. This is based on a $6,748 estimate per regular education student. Um, that's 76.4 times that number gives us $515,547.20. Then we have to count the special education students, which, um, DPI automatically now gives $12,000 per special education student. Instead of figuring out the cost of what exceeds a regular education student to educate a special education student, they changed that, that formula that they used to have, and it's now $12,000, just a set amount for a special education student that open enrolls into the district that he did. And so, um, we took that $12,000 and multiplied by the number of students, which was 15, and got $180,000. So the reason we have that 76.4 for regular education is we have one 4K student, and so they're counted as .6 because they're not in school all day. They're in a morning session or after a noon session. And so, um, our total calculations become 167.6 for regular ed and 91.2, um, that was in for regular ed. So 167.6 that are in for regular ed students, 91.2 out for regular ed students. And when you subtract that, it becomes 76.4. So that's how we got that number. And so when you total up the $515,547.20 and the $180,000, that's how you get the $695,400, or $547.20. And just as a reminder, at the, at the top there, that that $12,000 for open enrollment students with disabilities came, um, in 2015 through the Wisconsin Act 55, the state budget bill. And there's no longer cost estimates for non-resident students like I just said. And I have an asterisk in the, um, the table at the bottom for 2016, '17, where we have open enrollment in the Grafton is 192. We have open enrollment out to other districts at 101. So we're actually at a positive 91. But I wanted to note that we had, this year for the first time, we had more new open enrollment out of our district at number of 43 new residents that open enrolled out compared to 26 new residents open enrolled in. So as far as open enrollment recommendations for 2017, '18, by state statutes, districts can require open enrollment students to reapply for continuation in the district one time. Per our board policy, um, the board has elected that fifth-grade students who are entering middle school, reapply to continue open enrollment. There are currently nine open-enrolled students in fifth grade in our district who will be reapplying to continue in the district. Um, in addition, we do have a student applying for open enrollment through tuition waiver to remain in the district. So, um, when we use our formula for figuring out seats at each grade level that are available in our district for general education and special education, um, recommend that you approve 95 seats for general education, and two of those seats open up for special education. Um, all continuing applicants from grade five entering middle school and tuition waivers for the 2017, '18 school year be recommended. Administration may continue accepting students in the event that seats become available after the open enrollment period.
Any questions for Suzanne? Do we need a motion to approve the recommendation?
Make the motion to approve the recommendation.
One second.
Do we have data on those 43 new resident students out as well as the 26? Or is that data incorporated into...
Right, so that, that would be part of that 100... Right, so that would be part of that 192, and that's part of that 103, so they're within the data that's there. So if you'd like me to separate that out to find out, you know, where they are, where they came from, where they went to, just the 26 and the 43, you can do that.
I think that will be important information. Certainly speaks to the fact that there are choices available, and we need to be more competitive in those choices.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thanks Suzanne. A calendar discussion, Mr. Nelson.
So our administrative team, superintendent's cabinet's looked at this a couple of different times. We've met as an administrative team with all building principals and directors and myself, and looked at this twice. I worked with some teacher leaders, and Tofer and I met with them and gave them a couple of days to reach out to some of their colleagues as well and give feedback on the calendar. Some of the non-negotiables that we had said was, the board had said they wanted the school year to start on September 5th, and so we have the school year starting on September 5th, and that staff work 190 days. And so we have two different calendars, one that is a parent calendar, so walking through that. The majority of the pieces are going to be similar to what we've done in the past, with the exception of us starting on the 5th, and we think back to Mr. Riddle's comments about local control. This is a year when it would be great to have a little control of your calendar and not be, you possibly could start earlier and end earlier. But with that being said, we're at the point where, starting on the 5th, we would look at having that the 29th off for Teacher Professional Development Day, looking at October, which is a similar timeframe, we've had parent teacher conferences in the past, so that is continuing to be used in that way. One of the changes that we are suggesting is that we move early release to butt up two a day off for students, so that parents aren't having one Friday of PD of no one, of no students, and then maybe a week or two later, you have an early release. It puts it together for the families, and that's for that. We looked at the 22nd, we had a half day of school this year leading into Thanksgiving, and that was not seen as being a good use of time for students and families, and so that was taken off of that. Looking at the winter break, leading up to after Christmas and leading into the new year, coming back on the 3rd, final exams at the high school being that 23rd, 24th, and 25th, which leads us to the 26th, which we just had last Friday, so a similar situation there. One of the discussions that we have had, both administratively as well as with teacher leaders, is, one of the issues that we do have is by the high school and middle school being on semesters and the elementary schools being on trimesters, is it does cause us to have days off at different times and doesn't allow for K-12 alignment or 4K through 12 alignment. And so having that discussion of what would that look like if we were all on the same schedule, and meeting with parents, reporting out to parents, what would that look like? So we started having that conversation because it does cause us to have, that day off isn't as valuable for elementary because it isn't near the end of their trimester for them, and that doesn't come until March 9th for them. So it's a different piece for them, and March 9th isn't really beneficial for the secondary people because it's not really relevant for them. So that occurs along the way. Looking at February, having the 8th and the 9th, having the 28th be our spring parent teacher conference schedule, so that's one of the changes, is that in the past, we had elementary conferences at one point, and then secondary conferences, I believe it was two to three weeks later, a couple of weeks later, so having discussions about bringing those to a similar time and setting it in that way. Leading into March, spring break would be on the 30th, and then going into April, Easter's late that year, so we've attached spring break to Easter that goes along with that week. And then there's a day off in May, I think that would be Professional Development Day with no school memorial day, and then students' final day, the final exams at the high school would be the 8th, the 10th, and the 11th, which, excuse me, the 8th, 11th, and 12th, not Sunday, the 10th, excuse me. Graduation would be on the 10th, and final exams would be on that 12th for all students. So there's 176 days for students, which continues at the high school to give us more than two days of extra time, if there were to be snow days or inclement weather days that would go into that. So that was one of our discussion points. Elementary needs less time. If you recall, a couple of years ago is when the state moved away from a minimum number of days, it's all about instructional hours. Elementary has a lot of time built into their day. Possibly discussion in the future to look at how the elementary schedule is structured to maybe allow them more collaborative time. I hear that from teachers often, and they have a lot of hours of instruction built in, so maybe some time to discuss that further along the way as well. So that's the parent version. The staff calendar is going to mirror that. The big differences are going to be orange boxes that you'll see. So you'll see that this past year, we had more days for teacher professional development. We had five days of teacher professional development. We had, how it seems like a blur, we have two or three days for new teachers.
We had two and a half.
There we go. See? That's why I couldn't know.
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle. And so our thought process is, we'd already been putting a lot of thought into our onboarding of staff, going, I was at that session that Diana was at as well, on the onboarding that they do in Pewaki and what other districts do, we've reached out to other districts. But one of the things that we're going to look at is having new teachers for two days, but also requiring a third day from them. One of those days would be, it'd be almost like a half day of them. We've talked to administrative team with Rick and the help of others, developing like an online module to sort of get some of those pieces out of the way that staff could be doing at their house, wouldn't require them to be at our building, but would get some of those pieces that need to be done and could be done on their own. And then another half day would be working with a mentor. So as we look at our budgeting process and looking at adding mentors, having someone work with a mentor before the school year even begins, we would see as being invaluable for them to start the ground running, talking about curriculum, planning, culture of the buildings and so forth, before they even come in on the 23rd. So that's one of those pieces there. We had five days of professional development for staff this past year, speaking with teacher leaders as well as with our administrative team, we thought that was too many, and we thought that it wasn't as well spent as we had hoped. So we're looking at bringing that to four days with us not starting on the 5th. We have that going on the 28th, 29th, 30th, and the 31st. And then looking at the end of the calendar, you can see that although the school ends on the 12th of June, we have staff working on the 13th and 14th, so that Wednesday and Thursday. You know, in our discussions administratively as well as with teacher leaders, we really are building a calendar that we think will set us up for success pending a successful referendum in April. If the referendum passes in April, there will be, you know, Hoffman has said by, that September of 2018, that GES students will be able to be distributed to Kennedy and Woodview, and that means that we'll be having staff that are at GES moving either to Kennedy Woodview, or maybe staff at Kennedy moving to Woodview, or staff at Woodview moving to Kennedy, as we work with staff to develop those teams at each grade level. And so the time is going to be well spent to do some pieces of, whether it's professional development as a group, whether it's building, bringing groups together and looking at curriculum, whatever that may be. And we also see that is that May 18th is also being a day to do that as well. Some of those pieces are going to have more emphasis at the elementary, which is helpful to have that early release at that point, but that also ties into that May 18th day, and then leading up to those, that June 13th and 14th. And as we talked about as an administrative team, there's always going to be, you're not going to be doing professional development for what you just learned, you're going to be looking ahead to next year. It's going to be based on what are teachers needing to do for next year? It's going to be them working together with staff. It's not going to be sit and get professional development. It's going to be what are we looking ahead to next year? Whether that's reflecting, I think Mr. Manthe had mentioned, you know, high school teachers reflecting on their final exams, and how did those exams go, and revising those exams, whether it's fresh in their minds, looking ahead to next year. So something that's practical, but also is useful, and something that sort of checks off their plate. A lot of our staff are doing that over the summer. They're taking time out of that, of their summers to do that. You know, it's a fallacy to say that staff don't work from June 14th until, you know, August 23rd. That's not true. And so this would be an opportunity for us to have all staff together and working on those things, and so this is something that we were bringing forward as a recommendation to move us forward in the future.
Questions for Jeff?
I have a couple of questions. Can you just tell me, with the days off that you have, which are the professional development days, are they marking days and professional development days, or just marking?
Yep. Yep, I can tell you that. If I can log in, I can.
Just with your actual professional development.
Thing is, because that is the end of the first semester for 612.
Okay.
So, yeah, I have them. I'll tell you, I'll walk you through what the days are. So November 3rd, as you're looking at, excuse me, November 10th, excuse me, November 10th is a half marking day.
So half marking day.
Half professional development day. 12, 1 is also a half mark day, half professional development day. It's, and the 10th is, excuse me, November 10th 1 is a full for elementary because on the January 26th, it's the full for secondary. Does that make sense? So the 26th is the full day. There aren't really grades for staff at elementary, we're on different, being on different calendars, just at different times. And so the 10th is a half mark for secondary, full for elementary, looking at...
I'm sorry, Jeff. It would be December 1st should be the elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is, you're right. It is December 1st. I'm sorry, I don't have that. I didn't change it on my calendar after we met with, thank you. That's good. The 1st is the full that would go with that. The 26th is a full for secondary and half for pre-K through 5th. The 9th is district PD. The 2nd is our parent teacher conference time. The 18th is district PD, and the 13th and 14th is district PD. There isn't marking time in the third quarter.
In March?
Yep. There's two hours, there's two hours on March 2nd. There's parent teacher conferences, if we look at March 2nd, you'll see it's no school parent teacher conferences, 4K through 12. There'll be two hours of marking time during that. Actually, that has changed. We agreed to a change for that, based on, this isn't, this isn't right. There'll be, there's, it'll either be marking time or flex time for staff for their time during parent teacher conferences being at night. So there'll be PD from that 10 to 12 that would have been work time, and the afternoon will be either grading time or comp time for their work that week during parent teacher conferences. But nothing, the 18th is district PD, 13th and 14th is building district PD. And we're saying the 13th and 14th is really district, is really going to be building PD, it's going to be based on what the needs are at the different levels, the principals will work with the teacher leaders for that. If we have a passed referendum, it's obviously going to have a different perspective and different flavor district-wide looking at that.
Are student minutes increasing, decreasing, or staying the same relative to this year?
Same, 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 same is what they are.
When did we move away? The law changed in 2013 from 180 days to minutes. But prior to the law change, we were 180 days. When did we move to, did our change in days, as measured by this calendar, occur in 2013?
Well, I know with 100, those weren't always, there were exceptions, they didn't always have to be student contact days. So you could take out parent teacher.
Yeah, I think we did take out two.
And that's where you saw more half days, because then a half day counted as a day. Doesn't matter how many days, hours of instruction, a half day would, so you'd see more half days for calendars. I don't know what our calendar was like at that point. I know other districts that I worked in would have more half days, because you needed a day, and it counted as such.
So at this point, minutes are still the same?
One minute. Is there time built in for teachers to collaborate with each other throughout the year? I know at times, sometimes it's hard for them to talk to the other second grade teachers or...
And so there is, and that was a discussion that we had at our, at our district level administrative team, was these early release days specifically are designed for K8, pre-K8 collaboration so vertical alignment can occur. I think internally, we would agree that that hasn't occurred, and to the extent that we'd like it to occur, that there's room for growth with that, and those discussions are continuing for that, but yes.
The 2nd of January is a day on extending that break. I hope there's another one, another one before that, leaving any of the thought process there, versus getting done at the end of that Friday with kids in June, instead of leaving into the next week.
So our discussion was that the 22nd didn't, doesn't, with the half day, it wasn't well attended, and it tends to be a time when families are appreciating having more time with families over that November day. And you really need two days. You'd need, if you want to end on Friday, you got to take two days from somewhere. And so looking at the 2nd, with the 1st occurring on the Monday, coming back on the 2nd, there were other districts that came back on the 2nd this year. It happened to be on a Monday, so it's a little different setup, but people that we talked to that had done that, it wasn't well received, and so we thought by extending it a day, because we talked about, you know, you're going late by having school on the 22nd as you head into the Christmas holiday, but as you're moving forward, you're, because we discussed having it on the 22nd and coming back on the 2nd, and felt that the 2nd was a better day off for that.
Just one more observation. On the 17th and 18th of May, from April break, you have one, two, three, four, five, six weeks between the days off, whereas earlier, it's like every two to three weeks. Is there, did you consider maybe putting that, pushing that up a little bit?
We did.
That there's a break, or is there a reason for?
Yep.
I think you had mentioned.
Great question. Yep, we actually had it originally on the 20th. Well, originally, we had it on the 27th, and we moved it to the 20th. And then after talking to the teachers, the issue is that the first, typically the 30th of April through the 11th of May will be AP weeks, and so advanced placement classes will take their tests at that point. And so taking another day out of April steals another day of instruction for those students at the high school level, and so that's really what drove it to the May date. We wanted a late, we wanted, we wanted either an April or a May date, because we're planning on a successful referendum, and then we would be a piece that would have that discussions for that. So then, then those high school teachers had asked that it be later, and you can't go in the first or second week because that's during AP weeks, so then you're by default having it at the 18th. We thought 13th was too early.
I'm kind of in agreement with Paul. The 2nd and the 22nd are two extra days taken away from our AP kids.
Well, hey. Assuming that the referendum passes, it pushes you to the end of the next week, it leaves a week on construction. I agree with you too, that's why I agree. We are taking these days away.
Just a follow-up?
I hear you saying, I'm telling you, we have these discussions as well that would go with that, and we felt like those days with the attendance of students that are going to be there may not be the best days of instruction either. It would affect with students that are there. I hear what you're saying about, does that affect the number of days? Yes, I think our staff already sort of build in. I think it's, I guess personally, my experience with that problem has been that it's better for staff to know when students are going to be there and plan, and sort of backwards design to get kids ready for that AP exam, than to plan for all kids to be there. Half the kids show up, and now what do I do? And then we're, then you're in a bad spot, because now you're, it's hard to go for new content, and so then it's a difficult process that staff have to make that decision on. We saw that with the half day. High school ran a different schedule because of that. So, and that was the logic that went into it.
I mean, I understand the challenges of November 22nd. I guess on January 2nd, when the holiday falls on a sun... I, I guess on January second, when the holiday falls on a Sunday, as it did this year, then the observance of that is on Monday. If the holiday is on Monday, the observance is on Monday. Why the second? Is that just the typical duration of that break, seven days?
Um, it, it varies from year to year depending on when Christmas is and when, and when New Year's is. So you can, can you move it to six? Sure. I mean, based on this one, you could move it to six. Our issue that we saw is like, we didn't see the need, the, the piece for students. So we moved it back a day and students are coming back on a Monday, so they're having exams Thursday, Friday, Monday. We didn't know we gained that much. If you, if you came back to school on the second, that gives you a day, which then would say students' last day is the eleventh.
Right. So that's what you counted earlier. You'd need to find two days.
Oh, because you were saying, well, you were saying you wanted to end it on the eighth. Well, I thought I heard you say that.
Yes. Well, if you could find two days.
Right.
You'd end on the eighth.
And that, and, and that was our discussion that we had was, was the ways that we saw to get two days were to look at those days.
And you said the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is just, people really prefer having an extra day at that point than to be done several days earlier in June, that's just the, uh, is that the rationale for that?
Yes. That they're going to take that, some are going to take that day whether we offer it as a day of school or not. Whether it's a, you say it's a full day, then they're going, if they come to school, they're going to take a half day or they're not going to come to school or they're going to have to be traveling or they're going to be doing whatever with that. That's where you saw the, trying to get a half day in there, um, which didn't result in helping either. All, all of your questions are exactly the questions that we had as we tried struggling with this, which, which brings further discussion to like local control if we weren't starting on the fifth. Because if you want, if, if you give me the first, there's a day. But I, I think there wasn't a lot of love about us starting on the first this year with a Thursday, Friday. So I think there'd be less love starting on a Friday on the first because we had that discussion as well. We looked at all those pieces. It's not a, it, local control would be great, especially with this calendar.
Is it impossible to get a dispensation, start on August thirty-first and start two days and do a deep?
If you pass a referendum, it isn't. Because you're seeing that those articles that, that we'll see in AUSA that I've shared in my updates, you'll see where schools are adding minutes onto the day. I'm trying to think if it's Minominee Falls. It was the last one that I read where they're adding like ten or fifteen minutes onto each day so they can, they move graduation up to earlier and, because they passed it in November, so they're moving this year up. So I'm seeing that where people that passed referendums in November are adding minutes to their day, which gets them to their minutes and then they're able to get out earlier for work constructions. But otherwise, yes, it's basically either be MPS and struggling mightily or have a referendum or year-round school. Which we only like one out of those three options.
What's the, so let's, we say we pass a referendum, we bring this back to the table. Is it too hard to change the calendar then though? I mean, people have made plans. Could you say, could you move everything back two days or three days or something like that because we're, we need the, let's say we actually have a real need to get out early so they can start earlier in June. Would that be, would parents and families be really strained by that or is that a real option for us?
Well, I, I think the hardest, the, it's harder to add days than it is to take away days. Right? I mean, if everyone's expecting to their last day of school to be the twelfth and they were told that it was the eighth, that'd be easier than saying the last day is going to be the eighth and now it's going to be the twelfth because they might have made family plans. So the, the issue might be graduation, planning graduation, um, of, of moving that. That would, because I assume people are making plans to fly in, travel, all those pieces. So that, that probably becomes a harder piece. Does it affect, you know, I mean, would it affect families on a daily basis? That's a possibility if you add minutes onto it, um, depending on their work schedules and childcare and pieces like that. Definitely, we could run, we could run numbers that would say, how much would we have to add on to be able to do that? I mean, how many, like, I mean, I guess, I could give you a rough, how many minutes in a day do we count now with, without lunch and with everything else? Do you have a rough number? Yeah. All right. If I had a rough number, I could, and maybe, maybe I can look it up while you're talking. But that, that would be what we'd have to do. We, could we do that? Sure. Graduation would be my biggest concern because of that, but, but that could be set up in that way. I, I don't know if anyone's making, I don't, maybe there are. I know, I don't make June plans by April fourth of this year. You know, we're talking about April fourth of this year.
Which makes August, if we're talking about starting a couple of days early, you've got August plans, you know?
Right.
Anyway, we'll cross the vision.
If it was, if that was true, if, you know, if that was a piece, you would be, you'd have plenty of time from April to be able to think through that.
Okay.
I don't have that.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see some recommendations and some considerations and further discussion regarding a calendar that would, that would get those days, somehow get those days moved for the betterment of AP and for a potential need to capture that week as opposed to approving this tonight. I'd like at least some further discussion at the level. I, I understand, I mean, your comments tonight suggest that this is in support of the best educational calendar, right?
This is, this is our thought process from administrative team as well as our teacher leaders. So our recommendation is this, could we come back? I mean, I can give you, I, I can write out the options saying September first, we start on September first, we, we, we have school on the twenty-second, we have school on the second. We could, um, you could, you could eliminate a professional development day and add another one on the end of the year. That's not going to be well-received. Three days at the end of the year for staff is probably a little overkill, um, but you know, you're needing to get that extra day. We could, we could build a schedule in that we don't have extra days built in for snow and, and, and if there is a, if there is inclement weather or snow, then the high school needs to extend their days or they don't have, um, late start time. That would, that would, that would gain time that would go with that. There's districts that, one of our local districts, not the one that I used to work for, but a different local one, that does that at their high school. But then if you don't, if you have a snow day and inclement weather day, then you're, you're adjusting people's plans pretty quickly. So we can, we can come back to you. You know, our goal will be next year is to have this done in December, heading into the new year, so we'd have a calendar done. We got this done last year at the end of February and that's probably a little late for people to start planning ahead. We'd like to have this earlier. Other districts in our area do have their calendars out. Doesn't mean that we can't, I'm not saying, Paul, we can't wait two weeks, but internally, I've added this to my calendar next year to be done earlier to get feedback and so forth.
Well, I guess I'd like to see, or at least hear, a discussion about the educational merits of the options that you just outlined versus this.
Would you like me to present those? You want someone else to present? What do you, when you say you want to hear the educational merits, give, I'm, I'm sorry.
Like, again, what, what's the concern with January second? Is that kids not showing up or staff preferring to be off?
It's kids not showing up. It, it isn't that, this, this wasn't, this wasn't from teacher leaders.
Kids not show up on the second, given that, I mean, I suspect there are companies that, but most would celebrate the holiday on the first and most would be returning to work on the second.
Yep.
What kids don't show up?
Those that are, those that are, those are on vacation or those that are celebrating New Year's Day, watching football until whatever, but all, all those pieces. But, and, and that was the discussion. We, we had a lot of discussion about the second, but it gains us one day. The problem was coming up with, that, that was, that, that's the issue. The other day, I think the second is, is something that it was on, it was an add because it was like, well, you're adding with one day, you're start, you're ending on a Monday. That doesn't really fit what we were looking for. That's, you know, that's why we don't have the twenty-second because at first it was twenty-second, then we moved to the second, um, for that. But that, the one day is the issue that goes with that.
But if that gets us an earlier start on construction, we could ask EPI for dispensation to start a day earlier and add the day there, right?
Um, I, I could look into that if, if in, if in April, you can ask for a, a September start date, or, or, excuse me, an August start date. That, that's a, that's a harder sell for parents. Once again, that's a harder thing for parents though to say, you know, I'm thinking we're starting on the fifth and now we're telling you we're starting on, I don't know, pick a day, August thirtieth, Thursday, Wednesday, the thirtieth, because they're already on vacations.
Yeah, I'll put it this way.
Later, later is easier.
I suspect we would have fewer kids available on the first, given the Labor Day weekend, than we would have, so the first of September.
Okay.
Given the long, you know, historically, we haven't started till then, but given the long Labor Day weekend versus the second of January.
Possibly. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I've, I've never had a calendar that, that has the Friday off before Labor Day, but, but, so, and, and everyone's always come to school on that Friday before Labor Day. In all honesty. Like, like whether it's been a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday week and then we have, and then we have it off, whether it's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday week and then we have it off, or whether it's a Thursday, Friday and then we have it off, like, but possibly.
Well, that would be your second day.
And, but, but my understanding was that the board said we wanted to start on the fifth. So, so, so I, so that was, so when people, when people on my team said, well, we should start on the first, I said, well, my bosses said we're starting on the fifth, so that seems like a no-brainer.
I would agree with that's a given.
I don't either.
Well, it, it's obvious that we're spinning our wheels here. Let's, 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 let's come back to the table in two weeks. We'll, we'll, you can digest this, I can throw some ideas out at you and, and you can ask questions as they come along and we'll come back on that time. Right? Is that good?
Great. Okay, let's talk about a math course revision.
And, um, this is, this is a late add. Typically, we're going to be, um, having these discussions as in our curriculum process and the calendar that we have and so forth. And, you know, one of my goals is to develop processes for all the things that we do. So it's, it is easier, the calendar discussion, having it earlier, things like that. But at the same time, you're, you're paying us to have common sense and to use our judgment. And in our discussions with our math department, it's come forward that there's an option that we'd like to bring forward to the board for students that are accelerated in math. And so instead of waiting until next school year for those students to be able to have this opportunity because they didn't meet the deadline, um, we like, we want to bring this idea forward for the board to consider so that it will, could potentially help students for next school year. So even though we missed our deadline, um, we think this is worthy of the board's consideration so it can get in the, in the handbook. I'll turn it over to Diana, who I think is going to use Mr. Mantai and Mr. Bergman as well to sort of clarify some of those pieces. So Diana.
Great. So I'm just going to give a little background and then I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Mantai and Mr. Bergman to go into specifics about the actual course. But we've been examining our math options for students for several reasons. We saw some math data that gave us pause and had us asking some questions about math in Grafton. We've, um, we've been talking about the RISE programming for advanced learners and, and what are our options for students besides acceleration at third, fourth, and fifth grade? And that seemed to be one of the only ways for kids to get on that pathway for the most advanced math course options. We've been talking a lot about open enrollment students. We have a pretty big number that come in at ninth grade and don't, you know, depending on where they came from and what classes they've had, there are no options for them once they get to, um, to Grafton High School. If they're starting with geometry, for example, or even advanced algebra, they might not be able to get to that highest level math course unless they take two courses at the same time, two math options simultaneously, which there are a few students that do that, but that's typically not something kids like to do. It takes away another option of, of a course in another area. So I've been working collaboratively with the six twelve math team. It's represented by a math teacher from each grade level at the middle school as well as Mr. Bergman, Mr. Rittger, and Ms., Mrs. Gubling. We also had a RISE team as part of that and Scott was there and Kevin as part of our team as well and really diving into, um, looking at what are some options that we can start to think about. So this is one option that actually Mr. Bergman came up with that, um, that we could accelerate instead of, um, going through the regular course approval process of a new course. We could revise an existing course and up the ante, so to speak, and it would provide some more options for our students and that would be impacted right away next year. We're still going to be discussing other math options. We're adding back an accelerated compacted course back at the middle school for next year. So some, some students from sixth grade right now, if they're in the regular sixth grade course and they're showing, um, a, a need to possibly get a compacted course that would get them on the track for algebra at eighth grade, there is that option for next year. And we're still going to be looking at that freshman year at the high school and what other options can we do? But that would be a new course coming forward. So at this time, I just wanted to give you some background. Our goal is very much about opportunities for students and, uh, preparing kids for AP opportunities and this does both of those things. So I'm going to hand it off to Scott and Mike to talk a little bit about the pathways. You're going to, you have the current pathway and then you have the pathway and how it would change if we were to be able to do this. And it's really a change at the bottom portion and I'm going to pass it off to them to give a little bit more detail about what that course would look like.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for giving us the time to talk to you a little bit about the goals that we have in the area of mathematics. Diana did a great job of explaining, you know, although it's not coming at the typical time in the curriculum review process, we've got a couple of very recent meetings, um, which would indicate that we have a, a solution and an opportunity for students that we can implement as early as next year to assist some of those students in reaching our top mathematics pathway that are currently sophomores right now. It will benefit students all the way throughout, you know, beyond that, that particular class. The packet that you have simply is Diana's memo followed by a current pathway on the second page and then the proposed pathway on the third page and then a course description on, on the last page. And in a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bergman. I'd like to thank Mr. Bergman and the type of mathematics department who've been having these discussions throughout the last number of months in terms of how we can accelerate some students into a top pathway without just being our students that come in and have already taken geometry at the high school at eighth grade. Okay? Right now, those are our only students that can reach our top pathway of AP Calc BC. We have a solution tonight in terms of taking our advanced math course, making that more of a pre-calculus course. And then by creating that pre-calculus course, which adds a couple of topics that Mr. Bergman will discuss, that will open up a pathway for students to obtain Calc BC that wasn't there before and then it obtains another pathway for students to take DC as a junior and then obtain a youth options or a course beyond Calc BC that are seniors. That is not currently possible. So, you know, we think now is as good a time as any to bring it forward because it can impact kids as early as next year. So, you know, thank you for hearing us outside of our process at this point. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bergman. He'll talk a little bit about the mathematics side of this. So, Mr. Bergman?
Thanks. And again, as, as Diana and Scott have mentioned, this, it was kind of a, a two-fold reason how we, how we got here. The, the Common Core in math at the high school level covers the courses of algebra, geometry, and advanced algebra. It also includes some items that they consider to be fourth course options. They don't have a name for that in the Common Core, but they call those fourth course. Some schools call that course trigonometry, some schools call that pre-calculus. We've always used the very kind of generic name of advanced math. During the advanced math class, we would use this book, which is titled trigonometry, which again, some other district called that, that fourth course trigonometry. And we've always, we've called it trigonometry for short as well. What that prepared our students to go into is one of our AP level options, either AP Calculus AB or AP Statistics. And students coming out of, out of this course, the advanced, our current advanced math course, would be prepared to go in either of those pathways. What it did allow us to do, that some student, or some other schools are able to do, is some, some students in other schools can go right from that fourth level course, whatever they call it at their individual school, and go right into AP Calculus BC. In order to do that, you need to have a little bit more, this, you need to go beyond what our current book and curriculum does. Everything that is in this book is also in this book. Every single, you can... Every single, you can, you can see the size of this here. Everything that's in here is in here. This goes beyond. This will continue to push us further beyond. Our students will have a more accelerated path. So much of math is sequential, and you have to take algebra before you take algebra II. You have to take geometry before you take trigonometry. What this allows us to do is not, not skip anything, not condense anything. It actually just accelerates things. It gets us to be able to teach our higher-level students at a, at a more accelerated and more impactful rate. Students coming out of what we propose to be the pre-calculus course, which would be a replacement of our current advanced math course, would have actually three options to come out of that, where currently they only have two. Again, this is on the, the new proposed progression. Coming out of that pre-calculus class, either as sophomores or juniors, those students could take either AP Statistics, AP Calc, AB, or for our exceptional, highly accelerated, highly motivated students, could go right into the AP Calculus BC course, which currently is not an option that we have. Currently, when you take our advanced math course, in order to get two years of calculus here at the high school, you have to take calculus AB as a junior and then BC as a senior. This would allow some of those students to be able to accelerate right to that BC level course. Because of the preparation they get from the pre-calculus course, they could make that jump. It also fills in any of those gaps that we may have had in the Common Core, things that were laid out there again in that fourth-year course. Anything that we identified through our professional development that we've done over the last year or so, we've noticed that there are a couple of things in there that we don't cover quite to the full extent. And again, because our common, or our curriculum predates what's in the Common Core and needs to be updated to change that. We've done that at the algebra, geometry, and advanced algebra level. This book is the same book that I've used in my 14 years that I've taught here. This book is over 15 years old, so it doesn't serve the needs of what is currently in the Common Core. This book does. This is also written and published by the exact same people who do our calculus book. So the transition from this book into our calculus book would be a smooth transition. The students would be used to kind of the presentation of it. It's more modern, while a lot of the math hasn't changed for hundreds of years. The presentation of it, the way that we can use technology and the integration of those types of things has changed and would be reflected in using this book and a more modern curriculum book form. So, our question, our hope is that we are able to move forward with this, again, as quickly as next year. It would entail a calculus or a pre-calculus textbook purchase of roughly $15,000, depending on the price that we can get. But we're looking at most likely having four sections on this next year, meaning somewhere between 100 and 120 students already going to be ready to jump into that pre-calculus course.
One of the things that I want to point out as well is it still, it still allows that path for students that want to go to AB and then to BC as a senior. It doesn't eliminate that path. So if that's still the right path for somebody, that's great. But it does allow that opportunity to accelerate, okay, to BC and then beyond, or to get somebody to BC that comes here and starts with geometry that couldn't get there before. So that, those are the opportunities essentially that it's boards, and I think Mr. Bergman's done a great job of explaining the details of what that would be.
I'm going to approve the advanced math course be revised pre-calculus. You had me to push our students further, and Diana, add more options for our students. End of discussion, as far as I'm concerned.
Mike, just out of curiosity, I always thought of AB and BC as being a sequential necessity. And it sounds to me like, and I guess this is just exceptional students, because you're just adding this, this sliver of textbook, and you're eliminating AB as, because you wouldn't go do, you wouldn't do this, then BC, and go back and grab AB because you're already beyond that.
Everything that, everything that I currently teach in my BC class covers everything that's in the AB level class and beyond. And so this is going to, certainly this will be a change for, for those of us that teach the advanced math, pre-calculus class. It's also going to be a change for me in my BC class, because I will have students in there that have never had AB before. The content won't change. I mean, the BC content is what it is. I will have to change the way I do it in terms of the background that my students will have. They'll have, they will have a different background than my, the last 10 years that I've been teaching at, because they've all come through the AB to BC sequence. So my concept won't change, and I won't need to change curriculum to update the calculus. I'll have to change some of my techniques because I'll have a different clientele of students coming in that, again, they'll be, the idea here is that they'll be more ready to do that. And it's certainly going to be a challenge to skip it. By no means is it going to be, you know, it will be more challenging for those students to be able to do that than what it currently is. But it also opens up an option that doesn't currently exist. It's a much more challenging option, but it's at least an option.
And it adds rigor to those that end at the advanced algebra?
The advanced math.
The advanced...
Correct. And we do have some students that as seniors, they get to what we currently call advanced math. And instead, now they will be getting into pre-calculus, which, again, going to college then the following year will better prepare them for whatever class that they would take in college. So absolutely. Even if they don't benefit here from taking a calculus class, they would benefit in the future for being more prepared.
I do want to add, too, that, like I said, the conversations are going to continue at the board curriculum meeting that's set for, toward the end of February. I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about some of the other things that we're working on for that, for RISE programming and for additional options for our students.
So, but you, am I correct, then, you're saying currently about 120 students will take this option, that they'll go to pre-calculus straight to BC?
No. What I'm saying is that next year, we will have, because after advanced algebra is where you go into that fourth level course, which we currently have called advanced math, trigonometry. We'll have around 100 to 120 students ready to take pre-calculus next year. Some will be sophomores, some will be juniors, some will be seniors. So it'll be all three of those. Obviously, the seniors after next year, they'll be moving on. The juniors will have the option then as seniors to either take AB or BC. And our sophomores, again, will have the same option because they'll have two years down the road. And so it will, it will open up more opportunities for, for a whole nother level of students there. So already next year, we're looking at, again, between 100 and 120 students taking pre-calculus. Where does that go for BC? That, that has yet to be seen. So hopefully, that will just continue to increase our, our regulars BC numbers as well.
Right.
Any other questions from Mike or Scott? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, passes. Thanks for bringing it to the table.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Gift reports, Jeff.
Yes, we would ask the board to approve the following two gift reports. One for a donation for the softball program by Charles Blankenheim of $300. That is a restricted gift for the softball program, as well as a $565.75 donation by Home Depot of kitchen cabinets and hardware, delivery, installation to update the life skills classroom for the high school special education program. And it's a restricted gift that would stay with the special education program as well. So as with all of these gifts, the board approves those, and we send a thank you letter for their support of our students.
So like cabinets and hardware, everything that, and countertops and sinks stay in place after the renovation?
No, I think that's why it's written in, because they would say that, that we would want to move that, to that, that new space that would be usable for them.
I would hope that the softball program money would go directly to benefit the players and not to something that we should be taking care of, like the field or upkeep or something like that. I hope that's the understanding that it would be.
With all these...
I mean, I know it's restricted to the softball program, but I would hope it'd go to the benefit of the players directly and not maintenance or something like that.
Yeah. My experience has always been that the donation to the softball program is for the coach to work with their captains to decide how that money is allocated and spent, similar to when we had a donation for the basketball team that went towards uniforms. They'd already made that decision that it was going towards uniforms. So I've never, I've never seen, nor do I plan on ever having donations unless they say for a specific equipment item. That should be paid for out of our budget or out of fundraising by students that are those specific athletes. So that is, that is, to be clear, that has never, has been done, nor will it be done.
Sorry, Jamie, you don't get that.
Yeah. And that's never been a discussion at any level that I've ever had.
Questions? Do we get a motion?
No.
So do I want to make the motion to accept the recommendation?
Somebody.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, it passes with our, as always, our great thanks. A facilities update, Jamie.
Jamie?
From last meeting, we performed comprehensive scheduled maintenance on all the boilers. That includes flush management of these boilers. Performed inspections on all indoor creatures. Replaced bearings on high school cafeteria air handling unit. Repaired several parking lot lights, roughly of all of them, that were owned in these parking lot at the high school. Replaced a sun pump at Grafton Elementary, and replaced a controller on a gas-fired burner for a rooftop unit for the district office.
Anything to add, Mr. Nelson?
So we continue to, I mean, as we, looking at our maintenance program, like, we're obviously hoping for a successful program, but we're also still making the necessary adjustments and replacements and, and scheduled maintenance that we should be doing and allocating our budget as we should for that and prioritizing it for that. So we continue to do that.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, Paul's got something to do.
I would just like, in the minutes, relative to our discussion of the referendum, to reflect our thanks to Hoffman, associate. I saw Sam, Sam had to leave, but certainly the process was as smooth as it was and as efficient and effective as it was in many cases because of how they either prepared information for our meetings and met our request for additional information, or the facilitation of information, or the accumulation of information. So certainly would like to thank them for their efforts throughout the process as well.
Trust you to convey that message again tomorrow.
I will.
Thanks, Paul. With that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor?